Aba zotamela umxlangan, eh, xambe sizau kala njengwa hapas, sile ne for the next fifteen minutes. Eh, simbonutu bayaa fikaini. Omagwuti abafiki, godati na itake tetu ti execute. Ayad.[67.61]
Umby wa nomaguthola gala gwekes. Eh, ikes ba kita iphewa, ikes ithola gala eh na wene ezitiza ezinayo. Bese ia processa, bese kuwa ikesle eh nipheka ngayemakai, ikes aksheselu ngayo. Ikes ehenza izendo ezinigi eh eh engenzela ukuti eh weyazas. Even ikesle esithola eh belela njalo njalo umanga besigula. Eh, lomteto zvivinyagi uzo okuluma. Okwaka umteto opata izinhlelo zoguthola gala kwalio mini ningwani. Kikaun tigeswa gala. Siya bo ngababundombe la, osasjoy nire umxolishundombe la eh na e onili ngarel komite siya bo ngakakulu. Eh, ngitavangutige bazolukbengenake, xambe abane bompagati umanga bebenkena. Ngia krenutisiba directe ngapa ukuti balale kwanangapa sengesopaza msega. Tina esasfige iskatesi kwan. Xambe ngapande ukti ngichate iskatesi. Ngizotela umne wetoge eh eh ubaba osaidi eh namxlanja ku yana osasozosenzela isetholo. Eh, umanga besigpetile, bese estrela utoliga washe xamtecho eh inseso ya kozondi. Ukuti asenzele eh utoligo olfinriwe maylananazonge lezi kachana uzo bekulonya ngazo la. Ukuti eh zitining olimlosizudu natige bese se anauta. Unga notangixefoniniako ukute kutchabtabani, chabtabani, chabtabani. Angiti sasi witi digital eh itmanje eh umanga wugena lipene pepper alsho kutya uwazu pala. Weyawazi jukthapi ndezembalu foniniako kana uzo kumbula ukuti eh na wene etiza ngifuna obosa eh 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 bese sihulaga siya njalo. Umne weto ngalungninga zari tubage lo ukti wanzuzetu lo ngia bo.
Asbo ng'eh, asbo ng'eh che. Eh sanbonani. Nga bo na niyapiila. Eh, ikamalamu bo ngani saitini. Eh, manibonge ituba eh kutche eh ne komite. Eh, ngogusneki ituba as the D M R E drafting team to present lomteto ezambiwa eh kuni. Eh, mankoli is said that this our presenter angesi ngesi or English. Eh, inama shoni londo eh dibenditeta nabantu abamnyama. Eh, bata nfunu putaka kuu kuu so na unpoler. Eh, I'll be presenting the upstream petroleum resources development bill. Which in essence eh is an oil and gas bill. Eh, I think chair has explained here we talk about natural gas and crude oil. So, we will touch on the overview in terms of this legislation. We will talk about the process followed. Eh, we'll talk about the objects of the bill. Eh, the provisions of the bill as well as the proposed way forward. So, the exploration and production of oil and gas. Is currently regulated under the Minerals and Petroleum Resources Development Act, the M P R D A. And specifically chapter six of that act talks to oil and gas exploration and production. Eh, so the provisions in the current M P R D A are not sufficient. Eh, to holistically regulate eh the upstream oil and gas sector. Particularly as eh eh as we envisage that it could significantly grow in the country. Eh, in fact, the separation because this bill in essence is a separation of mineral regulation. From the regulation of oil and gas. Which are very different commodities, much as they are both natural resources. Eh, minerals eh are are hard rock minerals. They are rocky, if I can call it that. Whilst oil and gas is more fluid, meaning oil and gas flow. Whilst minerals like coal, if it is situated in a particular area, will not likely find it moving anywhere else. Oil and gas can easily moves once there is a condit that's created for it to move. Also eh eh oil and gas is much more capital intensive. So, being found both onshore, meaning on land, as well as offshore. The offshore part of oil and gas is much more capital intensive than mining. Where you would easily eh develop a mine for a hundred million rands to a billion rands. In terms of hard rock minerals. Oil and gas, you drill offshore, you drill one hole or one well with one billion rands. And for you to develop. Can you hear me? Oh, I see head shaking. Okay, so oil and gas, you need to drill one well, one billion rand at the minimum offshore. So even the cost that go into exploration and production of oil and gas versus mining. Much more differently, so it makes sense to separate the regulation of hard rock minerals from oil and gas. So, and this bill is also meant to strengthen the upstream petroleum provisions and presents a value proposition to South Africa. Eh, I think I've explained already. So the exploration and production in essence means the search for oil and gas. Which is crude oil and gas being natural gas. Eh, some of you or you should be able to relate to natural gas. It's almost the same as your liquefied petroleum gas or the gas that you use eh emakai. So in terms of the process followed. We started eh through visiting various mature jurisdictions in terms of oil and gas exploration and production. So we did research by visiting countries such as Norway, for example, which is much more mature. In its regulation of oil and gas and even in terms of actual exploration and production. We visited Canada. Eh, we visited the United Kingdom, for example, would have visited in Africa Nigeria. Which is another much mu- mature petroleum province. And and we've also looked closer to whom eh Namibia, for example, Mozambique and so on. And having learned from these more mature jurisdictions eh in the cor- in the context of the overseas jurisdictions and West Africa. We started the drafting process in terms of the bill. And the relevant consultations also took place. So in November of twenty nineteen eh, this bill was presented to cabinet. Eh, and cabinet approved that the bill could be published for public comments. Eh, twenty four December twenty nineteen, the bill was gazetted by Minister Gwede Mandase. Department of Mineral Resources and Energy eh for public comments eh. One would have thought on that day you would have been eh doing some shopping eh around Thala. And elsewhere with his wife, but he was busy gazetting a bill because that is how important this bill is in terms of. Eh, the future economic growth of South Africa. So eh, having received those comments, the public, there was a redrafting process. Eh incorporating the comments received and 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 further consultations. And until eh then we went to the constitutional certification of the bill. Cluster consultations took place. Then there was a submission to cabinet eh. And then a submission to parliament in June twenty twenty one eh. And and which was published for comments in June twenty twenty two. There was a deliberation on the bill by the National Assembly. And the National Assembly adopted the bill on twenty six October twenty twenty three. So we are presenting to yourselves a bill that's been adopted by the National Assembly. But the provinces, the input of the provinces is critical in terms of the ultimate eh passing of this bill into law. So without your inputs, this bill cannot eh really pass into an act, so into law. So this bill eh recognizes in terms of its objects. The internationally accepted right of the state to exercise sovereignty. Over all the petroleum resources within the republic. So this means no one would come from elsewhere outside of South Africa. No matter how powerful they might be and come here and just search. And find oil and gas without the express permission of the South African state through its agencies. Eh, which we will talk about later. Eh, the bill also gives effect to the fact that the nation's petroleum resources belong. To South Africans, so belongs to the nation. Whatever oil and gas might be found in our waters eh onshore belongs to you, the citizens of this country. With the state, the custodians thereof. Eh, so the bill also as one of these objects is to provide for substantially and meaningful expansion. Of opportunities for black persons who enter into and actively participate in the upstream petroleum sector. And to benefit from the exploitation of the national of the nation's petroleum resources. So the bill as one of these provisions. It provides that all acreage for exploration, so meaning all areas or what we call blocks. For exploration, development and production of petroleum in South Africa be administered. By the Petroleum Agency, South Africa. The Petroleum Agency, South Africa is already the designated agency in terms of the M P R D A. So the bill eh strengthens the functions of the Petroleum Agency and firms up the mandate of the Petroleum Agents. So. Eh, so the bill also therefore makes provision for the functions of the agency. The bill provides that the minister may and periodically and on recommendation by the Petroleum Agency. Initiate competitive administrative or opening open licensing rounds. So the bill provides for the minister to open a tender process, if I can call it that. Where any interested parties can actually eh eh apply to that process for rights. And the bill provides that anyone, any citizen of this country or any other entities or companies. From wherever can participate in such a process that will ultimately lead to eh you being awarded rights. Eh, and and the bill also provides for what we call a reconnaissance permit. Which is really the early stages of a petroleum right or license. Which is a permit that allows you to engage in activities eh. That are not invasive, meaning you in you can do research, you can look at data that's already been acquired. So as to understand the potential for oil and gas or the landscape. So there is such, there there is a provision for such a permit in terms of this bill, which has a two-year duration. Then the bill of course provides for the actual petroleum right. And the right has a what, what, what one could say a thirty nine year duration. You have an exploration period in terms of the bill, which is a nine-year period. Which has a three, if the first three years being the initial exploration period. That exploration period is renewable or renewable three times over two-year periods. And so, once you are granted the petroleum right, you are given three years within which to do exploration. You would have committed eh to a cer- a certain work program, meaning you would have said. I'm going to conduct A, B, C and D in terms of technical works based on this right. And this is how much money I'm going to invest in doing that. So at the end of the three years, the Petroleum Agency then evaluates whether indeed. You did do the technical works that you had committed to do. You did invest the monies that you said you'd invest. And then they make a recommendation or they then grant you an extension that having fulfilled. Eh eh the obligations in terms of the initial exploration period, you can then move on to the first. Eh, renewal, which is the two years. And then, once you fulfill that work program, you move on to the second renewal, then a third renewal. Once you are successful in your search for oil and gas, you now find oil and gas. You've made a discovery, you've assessed that this discovery is commercially viable. Meaning you can actually put infrastructure in place, develop this oil and gas and produce it. Eh, sell it to markets, either overseas markets in the in the case of oil or even local markets in the case of gas. You are then granted a production period of thirty years. You can now produce your gas, your oil over a thirty year period. And if you have not yet depleted the resources in terms of your oil and gas. You come back eh to the Petroleum Agency and ultimately the minister and request an extension of ten years. So you can have a forty year production period in terms of this bill. And this is not, this is something that has happened in South Africa, meaning the search for oil and gas. Is happening on an ongoing basis as we speak eh. But there has been discoveries along the south coast eh more in around Mossel Bay. Where gas was produced since nineteen ninety-two until twenty twenty. So for twenty eight years, there's been gas produced in Mossel Bay. Gas which was then converted in a refinery, gas to liquids refinery in Mossel Bay. To liquid fuels, petrol, diesel, paraffin, L P G. And some other specialty fuels for over twenty eight years. So this duration of a pot eh of a petroleum pro- petroleum right. The production period being thirty years is also consistent with what we have seen in South Africa. There has also been oil production around Mossel Bay eh since nineteen ninety-seven, I think around until around twenty thirteen. So this country has demonstrated around the south coast Mossel Bay area to have oil and gas. And there are several areas even in K Z N where there are strong indications that there may be oil and gas. And there is ongoing exploration happening. So this bill also recognizes that there are areas that may be that eh frontier or untouched. In terms of our knowledge of that area, in terms of its geology and in terms of its potential for oil and gas. So these areas are called frontier areas, which are areas that nobody has really looked into. So which might require much more effort to understand their potential and how you could go about. Eh exploiting the oil and gas in those areas. So this bill provides for a longer eh petroleum right in terms of those areas. Particularly in terms of the 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 exploration period. The initial exploration period becomes five years in terms of those areas versus three years. In 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 more normal areas. Eh, the renewals are also three years as opposed to two years in terms of a normal eh area. Okay, I think I've spoken to the minister eh. Periodically is able to go out in terms of a competitive bid process. Eh, with a view to ultimately award licenses to those that demonstrate that they have the wherewithal. To explore and ultimately exploit eh these petroleum resources. The bill also provides for consultation of interested and apart and and affected parties. So eh, the bill. Provides that within fourteen days of the date of acceptance of an application. Eh lodged for the Petroleum Agency. Or it calls for interested and affected parties to submit comments and objections regarding the application within thirty days. So if Petroleum Agency receives an application, it accepts the application for petroleum right. Interested and affected parties are given thirty days within which to comment in terms of that application and even object. If you have issues with the the granting of that eh or processing of that application, you can object to it. As interested and affected parties and the local communities. Eh, the bill also provides for the consultation of affected, interested and affected parties by the applicant themselves. So meaning not only is the Petroleum Agency obliged to notify interested and affected parties, but even. The applicants themselves must do the same. The bill also provides for the establishment of a petroleum development eh and environmental committee. That needs to be there to advise the minister on the objections received. So there will be a committee that will be set up, which is a committee that will draw in experts. Eh, I guess geo-scientists would have to sit in that committee. Environmental scientists will have to sit in that committee. Even experts on community engagement might have to sit in that committee to advise the minister in terms of any objections. Eh, the bill also provides for the the partitioning of a right. Meaning cutting up of a right into various species. But that can only be done with the express permission and return consent of the minister. So you can have a right, a big eh area that can be cut up into several smaller areas. To the extent that you've been given permission to that effect. The bill also specifically provides for the participation of black persons. Eh, in in any petroleum right. So this bill recognizes the the transformation agenda of our country. And the bill therefore provides that in any right, there must be a participation of black persons. So and this is not necessarily to say black persons cannot apply for a right hundred percent. Meaning a black person is free to apply for a right at a hundred percent level and look for partners themselves. But it says, in the event that any right is held by eh multinational oil companies. Is held by the likes of Shell, Deep eh Total Energies and others. Black persons have the right to want to participate in the at a ten percent level. And those companies cannot refuse you entry to the extent that you will have negotiated commercial terms. Within which you enter in terms of that right. And black persons in terms of the bill are any entities that are fifty plus one percent owned by black persons. And black eh persons. Are allowed to dilute eh their interest, meaning this ten percent to no less than five percent for the purposes of raising capital. I've indicated that this is a capital intensive eh endeavor. And therefore, it is very, very. Eh, difficult for any one person to really participate in a right wholly as that person or even entities. You would find in many rights in this country, offshore in particular. Eh, Total Energies eh partnering with Shell, for example, partnering with Petro S A. Because they need to share the risk, because those billions that they will be investing in the eh. None of these companies, because there is also the high risk. Though the risk that you could lose all of that money by investing it and not finding anything. So to carry, to share the risk, they then partner. And also to bring in requisite skills eh and a diversity of skills. So even black persons are expected to then seek funding from others by bringing them into their right. And and it's in the past it has happened where eh eh you could have a right at a hundred percent level. And you bring in partners, you give them, I'll make eh an example, fifty percent of that right, then you say to them. You invest all of the monies required in search for oil and gas. And I'll be entitled to a share of whatever oil or gas that's been found, not having contributed much financially in there. So that is also possible. So if a holder of a petroleum right is not able to secure the required black participation, meaning. No black person has raised their hand to want to participate in this or no black person feels. They have the financial wherewithal to really enter into this eh partnership. Then these entities are then allowed a further two years within which to look. For those black persons that may be interested to participate in their right. Eh, the bill also provides for the minister to reserve a block or blocks, meaning areas. For black persons, meaning the minister can say eh as advised by the Petroleum Agents. We think this area or this area may be easier for black persons or to find oil and gas. And because this eh this upstream or the search for oil and gas is ordinarily. High risk, to to minimize the risk for black persons, let's direct them to those areas that are less risky. So the minister then can set aside such blocks such that no one else except black persons can apply for rights over that area. This is another way of enabling the participation of black persons in the upstream petroleum sector. Eh, and in essence, giving equitable access, if I can go that far. To black persons in terms of this sector that's been predominantly dominated by multinational oil companies. So in terms of the rights or blocks reserved for black participation. Black persons can dilute their interest again, but to no less than thirty percent. So you can bring in partners, dilute up to seventy percent, but you must retain at least thirty percent of that right as a black person. And the bill also provides for the exit of black persons from a petroleum right. And where such black persons exit a right, that right retains the empowerment credentials. Eh, because it would have had the black person who then decided to exit because either they have made their money. And they want to to invest elsewhere. This then eh means those eh the the operators or the J V partnership that calls the right cannot be penalized. Because they are no longer black persons in there. The bill also provides for eh state participation or participation by the state. Who what is called eh, in in many jurisdictions, it's called a national oil company. In South Africa, we calling it the petroleum company. But there is a bill, I think that's been gazetted recently. On the establishment of the South African National Petroleum Corporation. So this bill envisages that state participation will be pursued through the South African National Petroleum Company. And at a twenty percent level. So meaning this bill provides for the state to carry twenty percent eh in any right. And it provides for black persons to carry ten percent. So thirty percent really of any right in South Africa is for the people of South Africa to the state and directly in terms of blacks. So, and the twenty percent participation by the state is carried. A true exploration and development, meaning the state is not expected. To contribute financially to the exploration work program or all the exploration activities. So if, I want to make an example, Total Energies and Partners. Eh, made a discover of gas and condensate or associated liquids near Mossel Bay recently, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Eh, to date and before they've actually developed that, they have spent close to ten billion rands. In terms of the proceeds of production, so if the state makes, say, every month, one billion or let's say ten billion goes to the state every month. But of that ten billion, maybe five billion there. Development or the search for oil was to fail, for example, nothing is discovered. The state would have had no financial exposure. So no cost can be recovered from this. So the bill also provides that once a petroleum right has reached the end of its term after the thirty years. Okay. Okay, so after the thirty years of production, the state can amend the petroleum right and extend the production period by another ten years. The bill also provides for access to third parties into production infrastructure. So you have entities that are strong financially, developing infrastructure to produce their oil and gas. I've just mentioned such a development could be up to hundred and fifty billion renz. There are black players, for example, that have also made discoveries in this slim area. It still provides that whatever ready in place, the others should be allowed to access or to produce through that infrastructure through what is called third party access. But of course, this will pay a fee for the use of that infrastructure. And this again is another enabling provision that says because the costs are so prohibitive in the development of oil and gas, those with strong financial muscle, which should also be enablers in terms of others developing, such as black persons. So the bill also provides that, I think I've spoken to the fact that oil and gas are fluid. Oil and gas is more like water can move across boundaries. So this bill provides that should that happen, so you could have two blocks and two different entities or JV partnerships holding rights in adjacent blocks. And some of that petroleum or oil and gas is straddles the boundaries in terms of these blocks. The petroleum agency must be notified of such. And also the bill provides that when that happens across national boundaries or across borders, for example, we have an area called the Orange Basin along the west coast. And that Orange Basin extends from South Africa to Namibia. And there's been discovery of oil and gas on the Namibian side. It is possible that you could have operators developing on the Namibian side in such a manner that there are oil and gas accumulations on the South African side that they could actually siphon off, meaning you could find this oil and gas on this side moving over to that side and being produced as though it belongs to Namibia or the operators on the Namibian side. So even in this case, the bill must be made. The petroleum agency and the state must be made aware of this. And then there must be negotiations as to how this will be equitably shared and recognized that it belongs both to Namibia and South Africa. The bill provides that all of the informational data are acquired, that is petroleum data, acquired in the search for oil and gas and which data costs billions as well. So for example, you would be aware that there is what we call a seismic acquisition that took place along the wild coast, near Watson Jones and almost all the way to KZN, where an acquisition that was stopped through the courts while underway. There are two such acquisitions that happened around twenty twenty one, so twenty twenty two, not so long ago, two years or so ago. They were stopped while along the way the other was off the west coast. That and that activity would have cost close to a billion renz. So it was stopped along the way costing the operators and those who are acquiring that data almost a billion renz. So all of the data that is acquired in this way belongs to the state ultimately with the petroleum agency, the custodian of such data. So this is valuable data and it's data acquired by others, but it ultimately belongs to the South African state and the people of South Africa with the petroleum agency as its custodian. The bill also provides for the issuing of closure certificates. This is at the end of production. The area must be restored to an acceptable level. So that closure certificate is then only issued once you can demonstrate that you've left, you have decommissioned and you've rehabilitated the area where you've had production for so many years to an acceptable state, then you are issued with a closure certificate by the minister. And you also need to have financial guarantees. So upfront, you need to demonstrate you have access to funding to conduct exploration in terms of this bill. And the bill also provides for exceptions under which the minister may suspend or cancel a permit or right. So if you hold a petroleum right as multinational oil companies or as local oil companies. And for example, you're conducting your activities in a manner that puts the environment at significant risk and without UK. The minister can actually suspend your right or cancel your right on the back of the significant risk to the environment, which we are not taking care of. Or where you are conducting operations without UK. And it also provides for restriction or prohibitions of exploration and production on certain land or block or blocks. There are certain areas that are heritage sites, for example. You might have areas in KZN where you have historical graves of significance. This bill provides that such no oil or gas could take place in those areas. For example, so it provides for exceptions and prohibitions. And the bill also provides for the optimal production of petroleum resources. So the bill through the petroleum agents provides for the monitoring of the activities of the right holders. So you have a shell, Total Energies and various other entities producing oil and gas in the country. But their strategies could say whilst we are, whilst the development can allow production at, make an example, a hundred, let's see, a hundred thousand barrels of oil per day. Meaning this development can actually produce hundred thousand barrels of oil per day. The strategies of these companies could be saying, no, let's cut back on the production. Let's only produce half of that, which is fifty thousand barrels of oil per day. The state can view that as not being optimal production of the petroleum resources and can actually compel those entities to increase the production back to hundred thousand. Because in so doing, because the state will derive revenue from any petroleum production in the form of taxes, in the form of royalties and so on. So and that is pegged on actual production. So the lesser you produce whilst you have the capacity to produce, you are limiting the state's at a given point in time. So you can be compelled to produce more optimal. The bill also provides for the minister, for ministers' power to expropriate property for the purposes of exploration or production if it is necessary for the achievement of the objects. And so and but such expropriation of land must only be done, it must be guided by section twenty five of the constitution. So any appropriation of land for the purposes of exploration and exploitation of oil and gas must be guided by the constitution. And I think that's a rigorous provision in the constitution in terms of that expropriation. And the bill also provides for exceptions under which a right permit or permission may lapse. The bill provides for transitional arrangements, meaning the bill recognizes that there are currently rights, I think up to fifty actually. Technical cooperation permits, exploration rights and production rights under the NPRDA. So this bill provides that those can transition to being governed under the new act in terms of the upstream Petroleum Resources Development Act. And and those who enjoy those rights currently will not be disadvantaged in any way by virtue of the change in law. Chair of the committee of the National Council of Provinces and virtually broadly, passing of this bill into law is a critical step for the development and growth of South Africa's oil and gas sector. I rest at this point.
Thank you very much, Abusai Di Mangans. They've been getting a little slant, showing you a slant. My lung, I'm going to beg you, I can't let you know. We won't get a monkey or a corner, I guess, if they're sitting here. All protocols observed. If I'm alive, you tell us it was on the off, if I look at it, it's limited. It's shot, it was okay, it was a true, it's a story we know, let me listen. Long tattoo is total now, I'm trying to eat a malo, I'm trying to go back, I'm sorry, it's a shilo. Um, tattoo's vivid, you know, what kick is what we're zimby what the petroleum got twenty twenty three. Um, I'm just coming, I'm gonna listen to you, I get a mlanje. Who's the ones who could just come and get, yes. Look about, I'm getting, getting natural gas, Kanye, no way, la, oh, I'm sure Ziva. Look, about the crude oil. Oh, she look at what you're talking about, like, it's like an animal, it's like an animal, it's a little. He cook, I'll tell you, I'm telling you, it's so bad, it's so bad, I'm trying to. This is what I know, but it's a little silly, we're gonna, I'm trying. This is what I do, I'm going, I'm going, I'm trying to. Kanye, no, but he's a teeny, isn't he, in the ghetto, so. And then, okay, so I'm going to go, I'm going to go, I'm going to go, I'm going to go. I'm going to send you a logo, she look at what you're doing, we're zimby what the petroleum. Could allow a panzi, we're such a good six, say, NPRDA. Long tattoo seven, so man, gee, obviously, I'm going to um tattoo to to give us what we zimbiwa the petroleum. We should look at what long tattoo, oh, my man, gee, I'll call him, I'm going to nail, and get into it, it's the game, I Oh, because the lemononi, yes, the petroleum, it too, too good for it, it cool. Like, I know, um, tattoos, Vivino, it's totally on my man, gee, oh, it draft. We shall say, we go to clean it, it's in the ghetto, eh, patelene, gee, ne zimbiwa the petroleum, for the way to the is in those, so, so, when you're in Africa. Do you know, this is you, I go to kick, is what we zimbiwa the petroleum? Lana, who's over, who show, I go show you, no, go kick, is what we guess, no, where. Um, I get class, I get in, but I don't believe it, because I like because I'm a man, gee, we should look at what you're talking about, I'm going to
Gakale, unalo ilingelubuzo, tinajengama lunga palemende asi, asi zile oso pendula. Sesa sasa obanolu etu u, u, uhlaga, nomi iskati lase sobesis tata ukuluma, nomi imbono ya bantu bonke, manga besesenza awa on report to the house. I house ikenkoli mlu etu ise gongo onjlofu. Lapo se xlangana kona amalu ngaoke au eighty esha mteru sa wazunatal. Lapo sobesisenza umbigo etu kutisi ambile sayayeshowe, sa hamba say Newcastle. Se sa ekamalake, sa yivala wamxla wialingana. Na asesito eshuwa bantu ngowashluwaxluka ekonbono ya bo. Eh, bayae voma eh ipi ilkoto abafuna ingakriso lapana lapana lapa. Nomaba fisalame ku etu eloku, nomakukisho eloku njalo njalo. Na oma ngabeke oso paula nganiya kondo kutile bill, it's a very technical bill. Abadabani ngi bayalalela nje ma kuliange zimbywa kutuku, ukushwe min. Potwa labo abana yogo, uktathula baguazu kuti balandele eh se akela kakulu kuti nibeke imbono. Oma ngabe ku kuti au guazu paula namxla nje aliko elibi lapo ongabala usende email. Nomu phone eh eh usende WhatsApp, anegesyo ama particulars ngamfo etu ulungsan zone. Eme la tresiake, angazomiya vela nigelesinto eh 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 zi tombe eh buwaiola. Kotu ma uti ayveli isobe simenyazelo uku kuti utola laganjani. Lapo ozo baguazu konu kwenza mass up machines apa leo. Eh, bagiti besetela agi, gona ngiyazo kuti pela likoana itu waloguti musu sibona si ipangwako utika. Eh, angeke nje ngai kulumindetise, iangshlo paka kulimoini. Eh, kotage, ngifuna nyuti ngilshule kcheni nba giti eh asi zele i ndabaza manzila. Asi zele i ndabaza msebenzi. Ah, asi zeli ndabaza makrant asmazo ministerakasa kipacha special oso tini, oso inyos, oso ehlisasi asasi. Eh, ama potola kona se awazi, kotan gesuwa zo pendula, ngoba bamaspala beko la. Eh, nee kinge ningin, neshtlope moen bagiti, nee zo mpifumulo xlambe ngenzee utu baguazu kavya shopa. Kade wui valentiana kabuyanga eh, ngegesuwa zo kuksiisa, kosi amesese yokulegiisa nje ngoba no mama bata ndazayola. Eh, ngitian kulume ngesuwa baba ngopi bota bato yu kshopa kakuluka. Oh mama ba, utu mama se du ngsele etay balda, uyazo mapolo bagwami lutu ita tukfige kaya. Se vilbambi le o, o, o temsele lapaa, ma utkon temsele la ningole. Sen ngenzela nje u, u, uksagelisa bagiti eh. Ngakela ke bagiti ogu kuti oma ngabe ku kona ombuzo onao, nomu paula onago. Eh, ama officials will note those responses. Kotu amaku kuti ngoba le bill gakale gakale, isa nendo eighty eh ama mineral resources. Nomu izimbywa ezikoona olualina semxlabatin eh uhulume na guba uyana oil controller. Na tikakuluka se si balale nzo ndu, sibe ne, 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 ne ekaze silbamba, igakuluka se lesi zimbywa oma zithola gala. Etuzenzi makaya lapo xtlalakona. Ipinde futi iasese kakulu, ogu kuti oma ngabe ku neenda o ezifigelegile. I ndao eh xlambe lapo kutuwa guna, guna mangoaba lezo ndao azti ndwa. Nomaku i ndao lapo ezzi, 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 ezzi figelegile. Petrolize ma protected areas, ngaba i ndao xlambe ezzi ne ilwane ezzi special. Eh, ezikoona ezengama trapo singa male se tinte, se tintagale, lezo ndao, lezo uhulume abene ne. Ngishonatua kukona abati cinema alitina sfuna ukiopega, uku ta kukona sengakthola. Uhulume nbesema nganjala, tika ngegen nguazu ngena langoba le ndao, ndao efigelegile. Lomte tuze vinyo agi oza ma ukus doktasanke nseinto, ozo sonde ndao, nje kona ozo sisatiina. Eh, igakuluka se bedenbi sholo kotu abafisa ngena e businessini. La lumkaka wezo ngbywa panzi eh warmanla eh raoyela kanjalo namantla ekas, itama kuti kiasa. Oma ngabeke ufa sa o paula, oza oparamsa isandla, ngoba as, as, asasananga tinasoke la. Eh, ne naxlambe ngoba nabokxala niyazana, kotu tina ngoba savokfiga asnas eh asfunse sitiwena ofage. Xlambe indo etise eteni, kutu boenga titisi asekshoni ipi. Besegi xlambe mba opamisa, sibnige zalanji nombo no, unambala one, two, three, four, five njalo njalo. Kona omte diwetu ozo hamba gakale, asi zile ke bagiti uzo politikala askulume nganxlangano. Eh, sizo kuluma omsebenzi wezi zizo, nje obanesibo nasila se kamga ma political party za ngafa. Kotu asese la, aga kona etu tino ofa gumfanswa no, o, o wezo politikla. So se akela agi, ogu kuti nje obana ne ngawenzile naso kulume nige olimini. Sen zeni isnse gozo kuti eh asi fagi inle se yesi politik, kunaga beka titisi zela. Ngoba sizo kankasa, se ay kankasela nje bagiti eh ngaskatsi etu masaspeti omsebenzi, kankasa, kankasa mpele nje. Eh, skakasa siso kase panzi eh, osebe obuya ba buya yoba nga buya ba nga bui. Eh, agoke zantense etu logo bagiti kuse zanteneke, sabantu as South Africa, baguazu natali in particular. Ngetela ke ogu kuti ngengeza lihoba, ne kuti ngamisa isandla sine kongbe eh eh ni, nibe, nibe nago o paula eh ninago. Eh, ngia ivula kinkula nje ngamancha. Ma kunegu futu paula yoyo, oshuti nliyoke tika ay le billi se izwa se aesega. Ngobe sen kotu agi bagiti sen keta masagami eh futi ngoba sobespetile iti besen kita inugulxanga pawa sambensonke eh ngoba ay serait.
Ukono funu paula eh, tatu etu on number one, umne etu lapaya on number two. Eh, for now, those are the only two hairs that I can notice. Anyone who wants to comment, okay, Baba you are number three. Eh, I can see my brother, you are number four and number five, okay. Eh, let's start with the sister over there eh. Magnensa, can you do me a simultaneous trans- eh eh translation of questions? Eh, can we get another mic or get this mic, yeah? Ima nganede do. Eh, oza ustula agi mama uti mene nguno sbanba no gasbanba ani eh, gekamga maspala otise. Beserwe albeka goodja eh, ulipege de, olimu osewa kuti kuluma ngalo, onalzami ona, onalwasga. Asiche.
Good afternoon, my name is Lomketi Rasha, I'm from Coxton, um from ward three. Um, I hope I'm, I don't speak out of turn, but I see here you have not included women and youth in your bill. Is there a way where you could have an inclusion of us women and us youth as well? Thank you.
Noted eh, obaba lapaya, gemo baguata ke au pubege magnensa, besa uti ga, uta turtu du bengas sholo ge. Sholo mama lombuzo rodu isho, gesezulu.
Ifingisputi ntsalani ngole, eh, I'm a process speaking person.
Yeah, yeah, it's process, it's, it's, it's process zulu, yeah.
It's process, okay.
Yeah.
Eh, ebengubuzo la ebengonebe ngengetela kuti o mama ne youthangi bonila. And beste luki include and if it's not out of equal security norma, injelenen sangayo, stella ifa.
Yes, waga la tatu etu, thank you very much eh, oasbe obaba lapaya, na oasbe Baba number two. Uta etu si luwa mutu ban. Okay. Yes, ma.
Kyao bengelela opamparati, bengelele nabasparashale eh, mina ngoba fana mjololo. Ngisala kona lakama lakaa, um, what five eh, kona ero inkonye. Eh, beni bona ngati oma izwa gala i ngobo le, yagogonke yesi zimbywa. I ngatina se ileta ama thuba emisebenzi, na kwe pantu. Kotu ke benke lukuzo kuti, lababa xala lapolo anse, bafigelege kanga kana anibo. Kyabo.
Okay eh, umne etu lapaya west tattoo. Eh, zont, ah wisa sngisine engala, engala kulumba. Uh, okay, okay, um, my name is Mr. Mtolo from Gov. Lake, what five? I think this initiative is going to bring about job creation. But what I want to know is how others who reside in the sea are going to be protected? Yeah, kobe ngamfutu.
Eh, mina ekamada mgumbo iselo atenza, gesoga gomaspala obulhebezwe ekopo. Eh, angazino bangzobengi po baka nganla, ne kotu eh, be bangpati sile move. Ogu kuti, sen ngati sen ngati manganabe sbo yela kona eh, sibe sina i ndu yoku kuti. Tye ngoba msebenzi ngayekonje, umontu manganabe eh eh funa ogu kuti asungu dipizini, soki ma laganana yoyo. Yoku wu isungula, ezobi ay koke peki, ma ipizini sikubega. Angenza ganjani, igokila angasiza galakona, kyabo.
Okay, na ogulungiile eh, eh, bakonon baka etiala. Economic development, kalu oparamse ne etu. Eh, Baba um, param, webo na ntseso, ntseso nje eh, tanduktenaktena kotage eh, iya buga yonah. Ntseso nje ngamo no eh, mastetala, webo, lumbuzo ju ukuluma ngao wena, why? Kyabo na u ipoma emyangwe nzo tutukiso kwa ma pizinis. Soke, naang, uba no, isibo ngomne etu. Obiela eh, obiela, abadabambe gakale nje eh, ngishay katinse kosushaga, abandate bene ngomo. Eh, abo na nje abandabalambele, kwaye na nje akseza, nje ngaza akuluminda baka kulume eh, umfoga biel. Se wak, eh, u, u, Baba no eh, west tattoo, dabachina ngaselo kune.
Thank you, Chris from the Green Net, your local environmental organization. Um, ito chuso self first? I've, you can hear me, I've looked at the bill before. The bill is really good at regulating a really very difficult industry. My question is, what is the environmental department doing to protect the environment? There's a lot of damage that's done through these industries. And currently, there's a lot of um, eh eh licenses being granted in conservation areas for mining. So isn't the environmental department supposed to protect the environment? I don't see a bill protecting the environment against these types of things. I also don't see anybody talking about the impact on the local um residents in those areas. Specifically talking about the Mediba tribe, that those residents are not considered when mining licenses are given. And those residents do not profit out of the mining. The mining money goes to the one percent at the top that's making it, not the residents, not the locals, not the people sitting in this room.
Okay, eh, magnensa.
Yoo, u, u, uyashoge obaba la, ogu kuti uyabuzo, ogu kuti umnyango weze mvelo. Iini oyenzayo, ukuze ufigele in, in velo, emonakalu weni ongenziwa, uku, uku, uku msebenzi, uku ngbywa, weze zimbywa. Ngoba uti msebenzi nje ngaleniva, muguensu monakalo omkulu, e ndaweni osuke wenzelwa kuzo. Wabuzo futu no kutige le billi lena isholu etu ngomtelelos obakona, ezindaweni lakuzo bengiwa kona izimbywa. Ubangelwa, uku ngbyo kwa lizombiwa, kulezonda, washo futu no kuti, aguveli kule, kuku, kulebilli kuti. Abaxala nibe zindawo lakuzo ngbyo kona izimbywa, bazo shomula anibo na ngukumbiwa kuzimbywa, ezindaweni abaxala kuzo.
Se wak, next speaker please.
Good morning, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Helen Dodge, I'm also from the Green Net. Um, I'd just like to, a couple of little points. The one is just when I went through the brawl and I looked at the percentage of actual black owners and ownership. It actually becomes a very, very small percentage because it can be diluted, then it can be diluted more. And twenty percent goes to the state and that can also change. So just to look at those numbers. And then, I'd like to say, well, for example, um, one of the big debates that many people may not be aware of is exactly what Chris referred to, which are the very, very dramatic and damaging impacts that offshore oil and gas um can have. So the exploration can do a lot of damage and production can go very, very wrong. So for example, in Nigeria, there is a huge, there's been sixty years of environmental destruction in the Niger Delta. And the people in that area are now embarking on a, a big court case. The precedent for this, if you Google deep horizon, this was a BP offshore, uh, oil and gas, ah, petrol project in Mexico. That, the, the court cases, the damage to the environment was so bad, nobody could grow food, there was no drinking water. All the livelihoods stopped and it took many, it's still there. And the BP eventually closed, it was a, a, I think a three hundred and twenty billion dollar that they ended up paying. So, um, the environmental implications are very extreme. And the reason that seismic blasting is not happening right now and ex- well, exploration is not happening off Port Shepston at near Aliwal Shol. And the reason that there's not seismic blasting happening off the wild coast at the moment is because of the increasing awareness that's happening on the ground within communities. Fishing communities, especially anyone and people have a spiritual connection with the rivers and with the oceans. And that spiritual connection is what our life comes from. And so, and also just to say, if you Google, you'll see that petrol driven vehicles.
Trust me, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So the production of, of petrol driven cars is being cut down in many countries. Um, cars like Mercedes Benz, Audi, uh Ford will not be producing petrol cars anymore by twenty thirty, twenty thirty five. I do have some, uh, written if any, so the, the, the industry is actually becoming obsolete owing to pressure from people on the ground. And if you do some research, you'll see why. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Um, magnensa eh, isamarase, beku omkulu mo omote eh, what do I uti je?
O, o, mama ge, o, o, uyasholana, ogu kuti uma ibuga i, i pesen tilili oktuage. Abadabamniyama, uma be bambi kaza gulemboni eh bazo shomula. Uti ulubone ngati lipanzaga kulu eh, kupinde futi naloko uti bona i, i kaza labo, ababla, abalbamba, ngaseltuju, oguensu kuti pesendi. Ababambi kaza ngalo gulemboni eh, lingi, eh, uti uyakala ngalo. Kapinde futu kakulume ngetipating, kuluma mpegiswa ne, eva mile, ngokateleni ngomtelela. Obakona, oh, oh, konteni eh, eh, ne msebenzi, petroliam, ezindaweni suke yenzo wakuzu. Uyasho kuti lapu en Nigeria nje na eh, seku beno monakalu swenzegile lapaya na osutate sixty years. Kanga ngu kuti gunane kala, Elsenkandolo ngokonteni na lo, kuzu komba nalape Mexiko ndakona. Ukoni kala nje ilkubega yonakona, ngokonteni na lo, ngoba uti omsebenzi okushwa yoa, weze zimbywa. Wenzu monakalo omkulu enveluweni, utu unezela eh, epuzwini eliela tindo obaba lo, osheli etuzewaki. Kanjinu kikuisa wazizi zimbywa futu, kuti ngase tati mniage mningi kakulu, oguensu monakalo omkulu ndaweni.
Oh, se wanga kulu, um, I guess senzage, kane, um, le, le zanasokta sislan, I guess iswa xlambeke. Um, Baba o, 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 o Said, o paula wako eh, not to what you are responding directly to questions, but make remarks on the basis of the substance of the um remarks that have been made by eh participants. Because, ya kolelo kuti, in the main, the issues that are raised are for us as members. As we go and interrogate this bill deeply, we reflect on what eh becomes sentiments of the public in general. I think that's what I, I am getting. As I have said initially, that ours is not to respond, ours is to actually get to listen to what you are saying. So that when we go back to the house, we, 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 we take into consideration the views and inputs eh of various stakeholders as, as it is the case now. But I will allow you to um reflect on, there would be straight issues like the involvement of youth and, and women and obviously people or relatives, able people and so on, what does this thing say eh, and other issues raised about obaba lapaya eh, ogu kuti eh, abadabaxala, ngazozonda, oktuala kona imbywa, bo na bazo susani, ton, ton eh, ngokubega.
Eh, thank you Chair. And I think, thank you Chair for, for, for also reminding me. Oh, thanks Chair for reminding us also that some of these questions are really for the committee and that therefore the, the committee will consider them, deliberate on them and revert. Eh, maybe on the issue of the bill being silent on women, youth, people with disabilities. Eh, I would admit that the bill does seem eh, or the black participation in the bill at the ten percent level and so on does sometimes seem to overshadow the importance of including women eh, youth as well as people with disability. I think there tends to be a, an assumption that black also includes eh, those sectors of society. So I think it's a matter that parliamentarians must look into eh, in terms of being explicit around women, youth and people with disabilities.
Uyashoge la obaba, ogu kuti umelanana ogu kuti kungaani, abesfasane, iingane, ngishonava kubasegeile, bona kali ngata babaluwa, kulo mte tusvivi. Utu ngenzega, ogu kuti amalu ngapalamende ma eh ehela imte tusvivi, nyenge ngale, besetuwa abandabamniyama bazo bambi kaza ngoten pesendi. Basuke bebaxlangan zile na, bo lababa vela glemkaka, abesfasane, neingane, kanjalo nava kubasegeile. Kotu utu ya bo, nukuto, okay, ena tuki atinga kutile ndabitu atiswa rabans, kotu na wabaxlangan siwe, kulo ten, kulo ten percent.
Then there's recognition eh, that this bill could bring economic development, okay. Eh, I think obaba, wela side, side in, wela side. Uti uyabona oba lomte tu eh, ungazi sa ingu bu eh, emisebenzi eh, ne, ne economic development. But i uyabuzo ba, abandoba xala ngasemaluani, ba kutuani ngabo, ba protected na. Eh, lomte tu is, subordinates itself, okaani, ongumte tu, on, on, onga panzi kwa lomte tu where protection of the environment, kutuwa inima, National Environmental Management Act. So lomte tu subordinates itself to the National Environmental Management Act. Meaning, yonge imiba, ingoku kuselo eh, or protection of the environment. And in essence will be governed through the National Environmental, National Environmental Management Act and related regulations. So lomte tu might appear to be silent on environmental protection. It's because of the recognition of the superiority of the National Environmental Management Act on matters pertaining to the environment. And abandu abaxala gaseloani eh, eh, most of eh activities in terms of exploration and production of futane noluani are actually out at sea. So you find most of these activities are fifty kilometers, hundred kilometers out at sea. Eh, point, eh, a case in point, Mosselby area, the oil and gas that's been produced eh, is about hundred kilometers from the land. So abandu abaxala futane noluani, abakapasele kanga in the context of eh, okxala wab. And also eh, the record around Mosselby has been such that there's really been very notable environmental incidents in that area on the back of twenty eight years of oil and gas production in that area.
Uyashoge ma kundana no Baba, o, o, shilo ati, ubone ngazuti, lomsebenzi we petroliam, oso vula matuba msebenzi. Kupinde futi ulateni ndutuwa, kotu wase buz, kuti, labanda baxale duze noluani, oma guezwa le msebenzi, yoku ngbyo kuzimbywa, nukshwaya guazu. Bazofigelego ganjani, mtelileni ona se obe kona. Uyashoge obaba kuti, lomte tu lo, osebenza ngapansi, komte tu gazuelonke, wokufigelwa kwe mve. Awukumtelelos obakona, ubanda baxala etuzi noluani, ya fani sage, jenga lapako Mosselby. Utse pele mniage ngafingelela, kwenu twenty eight, guezwa msebenzi fana ndaleni. Kotu awukumtelelo mobi eh, abandabaxala gleyanda o, ababegini na o, nje ngalo.
And then kukumum, there's a question on, is there way business eh, people can access funding? I guess that is funding enabled through this bill or funding broadly? Can, can funding access be enabled through this process? Yes, if you are holding a petroleum right. So meaning if you apply for a petroleum right, you are successful, say as black persons as businesses, local businesses. You are successful in being awarded a right. Eh, one, you can hold the right at hundred percent, I think I'm also going to be responding to. But this bill only provides for ten percent eh, participation by, by black people or locals and so on. This, this bill does not eh, prevent anyone, black people in particular from, for applying for a right at the hundred percent level. So meaning, black people are in terms of this bill entitled to apply for a right at the hundred percent level. But this bill goes further to provide that black people must be participants in any right, even a petroleum right that is awarded to big companies like Total Shell and so on, they must still be able to claim eh entry or be able to enter into those rights at the ten percent level. So this bill actually provides more for black people. It says black people can hold the right at hundred percent. Black people must also be allowed to participate in any right, whomever holds such a right. So can it facilitate access to funding? Yes, for those that are participant in, in exploration and production. Through them either diluting their equity interest, bringing in players with strong financial muscles that way being carried in terms of the forward work program.
Ma kundana no mbozoge, ote, u, u, u pasolu imali, lungathola gala ini, gomonjo funu bamba i kaza ku, ku, ku lomsebenzi, uku shwaya, noku ngbywa, weze zimbywa. Uyasho kuti, oma nje kutu ltolele i lungelo le petroliam, i lungelo le kutu shwaye, futu uzkikuisa. Uti u, u, unasithola ismali ngendele njalo, nje oba sizo ilu kuti, abandabamniyama banga bamba i kaza eh, ngoten pesendi. Kotu futi eh, banga bambi kaza ngama pesendi, ana fingelela kwa ngohundred. Uti unavele wenzelogo oktuwa okuba, kubo kuti ngampaniaki kubili, nabandabamniyama, besegi u, u amgele nabanya bantu, abazonge, naba bamsani na besede faga imali ge, besen ngali ongela, kubuazige kuti na we, usomule, msebenzi neyenzo wa lap.
Sometimes I'm tempted to pendule ngisi into and I hope I'm African, I use any language. So kukumbuzo ti eh, abandu local people, ba benefita, ope bona, in, in this search for oil and gas. Defunuguenza eh, umseke lo, ke Mosselby again. And why does you say Mosselby as an example is because eh, oil and gas search, eh Mosselby has been successful. So it's a test case here South Africa because eh, oil and gas was discovered in that area yao kiba yaproju swa over a prolonged period, this twenty eight years that you're talking about. So abandu by Mosselby and surrounds, ba benefitanjani eh, kwe oil and gas. Okokaala, okfunyano kwa le oil and gas. Wenza oba ku developwe a gas to liquids refinery, meaning kwa bill tua, irrefinery for uku processwa kwe oil, kwe, kwe gas into liquid fuels, petrol, diesel, paraffin, LPG and so on. Kwa kusebenza abandu bengi ngri, in the development. Kwaku sebenza abandu bengi ingri in the development of that refinery. So ukwakiwa kwa la refinery over a five-year period, kusebenziya bengi ingri, gobuninzi babo, stretching all the way from Mossel Bay into other areas, Onaizna, Porfotwe, Splatinbe Bay and various other areas in that Southern Cape region. Ukwakiwa kwa la refinery meant if funeka iben amans, because the refinery uses a lot of wood. Lamans, it meant makufir tua, it dam, a huge dam called the Volvo Danstam. And that dam was built for la refinery, but the dam is providing amansi for the entire Mossel Bay municipality and surrounds. So abandu benda oba benefitan, go bakobe kuitama, ebelense lo irrefinery, but that they could also be supplied from until this day. So there is water, the, the Mossel Bay area and surrounds are supplied by the Volvo Danstam. Eh, eh, i built a way la refinery, so that's one of the early air benefits. Eh, eh, there's been development of shopping complexes around Mossel Bay. Development of hotels on the beachfront, development of schools and hospitals. Eh, si kache, abandu abani ngibenda au, on the back of letive, the activities associated with let development and other associated industries, eh, si kulileyo, efneka, si provide a support to la refinery. So aban benda au, ba kamla in terms of the jobs, some are, are, are business players providing services to that refinery.
Okay, in terms of the benefits, that local residents will benefit out of such initiatives. He makes an example eh, using Mossel Bay eh, since eh, the exploration and production of oil was established in the area and which proved to be very successful as it has been taking place for twenty-eight years. He's saying residents of surrounding areas in Mossel Bay have hugely benefited because a gas refinery was established today and when it was built or under construction, residents of the area were the people who were working on site today, which means they benefited. And also a dam had to be built in the area to supply water to the refinery. People who were building that dam are the residents of the Mossel Bay area. There was also development in terms of malls, hotels, hospitals and other, other firms or companies that seeks to provide support to the refinery. All such are initiatives that proved to be more benefiting to the residents of the area in terms of jobs and other necessities eh, of life.
Sebongabageti eh, sebongakulu eh, we esimpendulu eninja, oka ni, embono eni watiwe. Joba ngate ngisho ngiti, ekale, ukpaula okona, ogne ngiti na, jengama members, asisupendula kon. Ngoba, distrau si bizongama public hearings, si sondale lo utinteni. So that oma ngabe, es i committee, sesiotis, sesiotis kasa master ourselves, sesenza ereportiere, esiotis kasa warehouse. Si tate yonge imbono yenu eh, jangoba injali. Eh, ngiyakabanga oguti eh, eka tibi funukaula, ba ipharamsili sa ala. Ngaphalde mokona, otu, ayegute xakulu nyenge, kosi amgobashambe, ngonlu amebisa tewo oguti zibaba. Isati, si tewo papa magangan, namikona, langfunukilu lakona, ngangani kesele jee. Eh, leluthucha nyane ngani bagiti, lo oguti naoe u, 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 ukpaula, kotu afuti, nomunga shongo lutu bagiti, aglonikaala. Eh, nomunga shongo lutu nje eh, eh, u, u sashonisha eh, futi, imbono yako eh, izinzile. Eh, ngoknamani, soke, oma ngabe ena seko ofisa ukpaula eh, angeke si, 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 sinjachi ngaloko. Eh, kotu afutuma ekolo ofisa ukpaula, angasipharamsi sa ala, ngialfula lutucha nyane ngani. Eh, ngoba, agate gilfuli, ekta lenba pharamsi, angita si kisale, snaskomba. Asika ngiti. Angizwa kache. Eh, ah, ngiyabo ngake basaloani, ngiyabo ngabang, banbengos. Ya taba, ogutu wakmele, oba ngabe, kesele skoli ngan, pa, lesit, nantoo, yoba omfundi, sa ngangfanel. Eh, ngangfanela eh, ngangpila kache, kosi amingpila, ngemniga lo soke, nzo. Eh, ngangpila kache. Eh, a, a, asishoke bagiti, oguti. Le exercise, le pile eh, njenoba inji, ayiko perfect. It has a lot of criticism, we've listened to those criticisms, criticisms. There are a lot of recommendations, we've listened to those recommendations. We have our legal advisor here eh, eh, an attorney, eh, na pita hat attorney. Eh, utaduetu, ovena, vena, can you stand up? This is an advisor to the committee. Eh, she's taking notes of everything that is being said. We have our senior researcher at the back eh, obabo ngale, over there. Eh, eh, they, they take notes on our behalf, then they will consolidate the report as we will be discussing it. I want to impress upon the fact that we will be taking each and every submission seriously. Eh, we are one province out of nine. We do not know what other provinces are discussing and what will be their final mandate going back to the National Council of Provinces. But eh, we will eh, take our cue from the public engagements that we are having so that whatever becomes the recommendation of KZN is a recommendation that carries your views and, 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 and your, and your attentances in different eh, 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 forums or other platforms that we've been to. Eh, asinbonge bagiti, ngoklonipa ukulu, sinbonge, oguti niwazile, oguti nifige ngapa eh. Eh, sinbonge bagiti eh, nipoma enda, nisa xulwaxugeni, sibonge yana oguti, kulu kulu sposisile, ngoguti, atukuspolisa ngani. Sesfile nzo, gini, eshi xule i, i langa eh. Ismeme zelo, ektuwa angise nze, oguti, oma ngabe, seskulegi le savala. Soke. Uyakela oguti, uloa mia ngoloa, une hall engale, soke tina, malungo, mpakatesila. Siyonge nanga le, ukona eh, ishamte tusinlo, ngselegona, oguti niwazi, ogutola ze, nitima senbu ele makaya, na, oba, namba, unngono, kama kulumumu, duwa tu, usu, tu, ono tumkulume, ulambe. U, domuskuluma, kotu, usu, ayeguwa na, no, ba, 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 pa gilewa. Ba pangbe, la, kotu ge, ba oguti, ba oguti, ba oguti. Eh, on a serious note eh, there is lunch eh, provided. Eh, I think there is a dining hall eh, beyond eh, those double doors and eh, everyone is invited. The officials and members are urged to remain here, I think they will be provided here. Eh, iman. Iman. Amenige. Amen basaloan. Asil ungselilene bagiti, ndela epasiga, si buya ku eswenski, abani ngibeta ngiti. Eh, asil ungsen ngachelinda, basit kabe, asit kabe, ndela yoku, yoku mbo la, omfeli wetu. Eh, siso ikabanga oguti, si pate kache, si kulege, nabandwa nabete, sbasala yo. Si kulege, ninganza, te, isekoli, ni, esema universities, esingawa kwaso, utwale emsebenzi. Si kulege, lukthole makaya, si thulege, lukhula, si kulege, ikthula, empakati, neslala guyo. Eh, oguti, nabasebenza, oba, baba hipi emsebenzi, nabapacha, bana, nesala sensei, mbige, basba kulege, le bagiti. Ke ba thukakakakisa eh, eh, angishoke, kwe na mfo, etu, xlambe, ngenzo, na omphacho, nesala sensei, mbia, ngas. Kotu nje, siso, ba kulege, nabokamba, bakan kulu kulu, oguti, baspate kache, taduetu, u, kwe nanggo. Eh, nanggo, bestela, u, si, tanda zele, taduetu, osusi, valela, omte, bi wetu eh. Kamfo, tungiyavalo, mslanga no eh, i, i, ine, cha jeyalo, mslanga nju, ma usu valo, you can't, you can't speak. No. You had all the time of raising your hand. No, 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 besela, ndavo, inda, elo, ungselwe kache ngali, ageku muzo, shana pansi ala, azogu, shana emenge nyao. So, kache kache akfanel, jenga uyazan, ndoye nze. Yeah, taduetu.
Ikamalengosi liyo liyo eh, na, opepe la. Opepe la bu, uyabustindiswa uyabustindiswa. Bayete, mkulunkulu etongwe lekseni, bayete tuwalale tu, bayete baba wetona amanda onke. Sibongile, eka meni, ligachi, esinkose pilayo, sibongi, lukushtwala mkosie, sisuge, inda, wenezalwaxugeni. Siabonga baba, sespinde makaya, hamba naati, ngamonya, ngamonya, uslonde, eka meni, ligachi, esinkose pilayo. Baba wetongwele, isbongo, zonke, isbuela gua, siyabonga tuwalale tu, ngunkulunkulu opilayo. Tati inda, oyakoke, baba wetongwele, e, intwen zonke, nabantu bakobonke, eka meni, ligachi, esu siathoba, si niga zutumo. Ngokristu, chesinkose asenazareta manje, napakate, hallelujah. ekameni ligachi esu siathoba, sibniga zutumo, ngo Kristu chesinkose asena zareta manje napakate, hallelujah.